Okay. Calls order. Forest Park City Council Work Session, July 20, 2020. First item on the work session is Small Business Assistance. Councilwoman Herbie and Mr. Paul Brim, I'm sure.
Yeah, as you would note from your materials, because of the COVID crisis, small businesses are facing some challenges associated with trying to meet federal, state, and county guidelines for operation. And so the cities identify federal and county and state resources that might be able to fund a small business assistance program that would help the companies recover from and operate during the crisis. And specifically, they're recommending establishment of a $50,000 initiative with money coming from sources like FEMA and the CARES Act. And it would help expedite and discount permit fees. And it would also provide some redevelopment grants to help them with costs associated with improvements. There's a memo from Paul Brim in our materials. I don't know if Paul wants to cover any additional information.
Go ahead, Paul.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Yes, I think Councilor Herbie described the program pretty well. As you know, we've been seeing alternatives for how we could help small businesses during this time. I actually contacted a half a dozen other communities to see what they were doing. And these common elements kept coming up, some type of direct financial assistance. We're not going to be able to provide them with make or break money. But our thought was, especially with where we're at in the process, perhaps we could have done with PPE, things to help, you know, clean materials, things that might help them open their business or stay open during this time. Some of those unexpected expenses that come up associated with meeting the governor, the state guidelines for operating a business right now. So we thought we could do that. The other component of that was the discounted permitting. That we've actually done before, as some of you know, as an economic development incentive. We recently, just recently, used this type of incentive. You might recall, year, a couple of years ago, we actually worked with businesses that were being relocated as part of the North Point Shopping Center redevelopment project. If they stayed in town, they would have been eligible for these types of incentives. One of them actually just recently moved back to Forest Park. As the city manager knows, we actually, and that is consistent with the previous program, we're able to provide them with a discounted permitting fee to help them make that move back to Forest Park. That's something we already approved. So tonight, what we're looking to do is to kind of extend that same type of a program, but to all of our, open it up to our small businesses so that they can possibly apply for additional money. The one thing that we're doing that some communities haven't, have done, we're not going to do it. Some communities, if a company had received assistance from the federal government or the state government, so if they've got some PPP money, payroll protection money, or some other alternative, they're eligible for those local programs. We're not pitching our money back. We see it as something that complements those other programs, doesn't replace it. So we're actually still offering that as an advantage. As Councilor Herbie pointed out, we have $50,000 set aside. $40,000 of that is coming from other sources, outside sources of funds. $10,000 is coming from the cities, redevelopment campaign, and other sources of funds. So we're doing a match consistent with what the guidelines are for the FEMA dollars. But the majority of this money is coming from the outside. And we're using that to kind of make this program, put it in place. If we did $1,000 grants, we could do 50 of them. Now, what we're suggesting is that we allow us to make awards up to $2,000. There may be some companies that we can do more good with by giving them a slightly larger one. So we kind of see this as what we could do between 25 and 50 grants. The permitting fees are something we could work with all of those small businesses on. So this is a pretty comprehensive program. It's one we feel confident that we can put out there. It will have a positive impact. At the same time, it's not placing an undue burden on our unlimited resources. I'm sure all of you have seen the financial reports. You know, cities are just like businesses or any other entity right now. Revenue is down. So, you know, we're not doing something that's going to place a burden or take money away from some other program or service. This is something we can do, using those FEMA dollars for this purpose, and accomplish that.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Paul?
Yeah, Paul, I have a question too. In regards to your program, I read through your draft letter in there. Does the city currently have listings of small businesses that could be in a qualified position for this program?
Oh, we're pretty confident. If you, we did an analysis of what businesses. We actually had, believe it or not, about five dozen small businesses that took advantage of the Payroll Protection Program. Now, that program was actually for companies that had up to 150, I think it was, employees. It may even have been larger, Don. It might have been 250. Yeah, so it was a much larger piece of the pie. We had five dozen companies that took advantage of the Federal Payroll Protection Program. We're thinking by lowering that amount to 50 employees or less. And honestly, we're looking to tailor towards those very small companies and businesses. The smaller restaurants, the smaller shops. We want to try to find the people that were really kind of fell through the cracks on the county and state programming and try to help them stay in business here with us. So that's the way to do this program.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was, that's what I was asking. Because I read through what you have there, but I was just asking, do we, is there a list? Have you kind of taken a poll within the city to, to know the businesses that are in, in the categories of what's the qualification of 50 or less employees?
Um, we know roughly what the, who those companies are. We haven't taken a poll, but obviously, we have our unemployment data. Now, as you all know, the finance and tax records are confidential. I don't have access to those records. However, I can cross that with our leader. And I can share the information with our leader. And her, her leader can give me a up or down, you know, red flag, you know, whether or not it meets the eligibility criteria. So we can confirm that. Obviously, we would, we would, when we put any incentive program together, if we're providing any type of financial incentive, they have to provide their W-9 to us. So we'll know, you know, how they're organized, if they're a business entity. Obviously, they're going to have to be current with their taxes here in Forest Park. Those types, those are all things we look for in any incentive offer that we make. The one thing that I did want to bring up, and I'm actually glad you kind of brought that up, is that in the resolution itself, there is a line there in Section 2 that says, "City staff will make recommendations to city council for approval." We certainly have no problem doing that. I think there is a question whether or not council wants us to do that or if they just want to make this something that's handled by the administration. For instance, if we do 50 incentive packages, do you want all 50 of those small business incentive packages coming back to council? Or do you want to authorize the nation to administer, create the program and administer the program consistent with these guidelines? So that's one thing you need to decide. If you want it coming back to each and every incentive, we would leave that language in. If you want to have it handled by the administration so that we can get, get that money out a little more quickly, then we would probably delete that last line in Section 2 of the resolution. But that's, that's a decision after you. I don't have a personal preference. I do think we could, if we handle it administratively, we can probably move a little more quickly. Obviously, if we're bringing these back to council, you could have, you know, a dozen or dozen resolutions.
Yeah, that's kind of why I was asking if there was some kind of listing. But is there a initial point of communication to where the bases or the masses of the small business would kind of be informed at the same time? Because we don't know. If it's less than 50, then it could be more than 50, and it would be like a first come, first served type thing?
We would, we would try to make an announcement utilizing all of our typical media sources. So we would do a press release that would be circulated to all the local media. We would post it on Facebook, post it on our website. We would also utilize any services like we have with Waycross to get that message out. So we would utilize our usual communication vehicles to get the word out. We would work with the Forest Park Chamber of Commerce and make sure that they could send it out in a bulletin to all of their businesses. And I think we would try to coordinate that communication effort so that everyone had an equal opportunity to access those funds.
Eric, she says, well.
My, my feeling on it is that we, I think we should do it like we've done in the past with any, with these types of programs and incentives. And that would be, once council has passed and approved the legislation, then we don't need to have that same thing come back to us. For me, that would be turning out to approve it twice. And, and I'm speaking, Paul, in terms of the last sentence in Section 2.
That, that would be my suggestion. Because just from an expedited standpoint, to try to get this money out to them, they'd have to wait maybe up to two weeks before we need to. Or it could happen over the recess. So I would just assume, see that deleted or just say, they'll make the recommendation to the city manager. Let him have the final decision.
I, I actually like Councilor Herbie's suggestion that it be, that it go across Don's desk. I think that's a good, a good way to ensure that each and every request is evaluated fairly and objectively. If there are any questions, Don, then can share that directly with council. But I agree with Councilor Herbie. My main concern is, you know, how we can get this money out there quickly. Yeah, we're coming up on those deadlines when some of those initial funding rounds are going to start to run out. And I think we're going to see some businesses as we get to the end of that first round of the Payroll Protection Program, as you get to the first round of some of the unemployment benefits, some of those things that are starting to round out. I think that we want to make sure that we're in a position to get this money out there. We're gonna, there's going to be a gap there. I think we could see some, especially some of these small shop owners and small businesses face some hardship here the next month or so. I think this gives us an opportunity, at least some way. Again, our dollars are not going to make or break anything. But I think coupled with other programming that's out there, this will help our businesses stay bottom.
Any other council members got any suggestions or comments on that particular part of the issue, which would be the last sentence in Section 2, whether to leave it out or to keep it in?
I like the suggestion of changing that instead of saying to city council for approval, to the city manager for approval, if that's acceptable.
Any other comments on that?
I have a question for Sally.
Yes.
Do we have to read this in full?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we would just make an amendment then?
You don't need to make an amendment until you do it.
After I read it.
Well, you have to, you have to get the motion on the floor. Then you have to amend it.
Well, if she reads, if she reads it, the word it says, "Matter of City Manager, City Council", there won't be a need for it.
It's posted this way, isn't it, Sally?
Well, I have posted, I posted it online this way, but yeah.
So it's posted this way. We have to formally amend it.
Any other questions on that matter? Comments? I believe that's the only item that we have on the work session. And according to my railroad pocket watch here, my railroad pocket watch says 7:01. So if there's no other discussion or work session, I declare that the work session be closed. At this point, we would go, I will call to order City Forest Park's City Council Meeting Number 1358, July 20 of 2020. Let's have the pledge, please. And Councilwoman Holt, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, and the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown. Herbie. Here. Holt. Here. Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness. Here.
Yeah.
There are motion to excuse.
Motion to excuse Councilor Brown.
Is there a second? It's been moved in a second that we would excuse Councilman Brown. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by a sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Councilman Brown is excused. Item 2 is minutes. You should all have gotten copies of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing the same nine. Item 3, presentation. There are no presentations this evening, so we would move to item 4, communications from the public. Mr. Jones, did you have anything from anybody?
No, we did not receive any notices, emails, or phone calls with regards to any information that anyone wanted to have on this meeting. So we have no, no public comments.
Thank you, sir. Since we have none of those, we will move to item number 5, standing committee. Reports to standing committees, the first of those being community, councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session of the 27th. You had anything to add?
No, I did not.
Next committee is Mr. Brown's Law Committee. He had, is there anybody to report for him? I have no items for him at this point. So we would move to item C, Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you. But I would like to thank, I would like to thank you all for your expression of sympathy in the loss of my sister. I appreciate that.
You're more than welcome. Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I don't have any items for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Next committee reporter is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
I do not have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
Not anything different than our last meeting.
Okay. Next report then would be Wade's means, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I just wanted to report on the Tax Incentive Review Committee that reviews annually all of our enterprise zone agreements and our community TIF agreements. And we have only three remaining enterprise zones. Ameritas, Cincinnati Testing Laboratory, and Fry Fasteners Systems, all of which were approved to continue. And the two community TIF programs that we have are at Parkwood Plaza and also at the mall. And the Parkwood Plaza, a request was made to renew that as-is, which passed, and requested that the mall be renewed with a warning letter that the owner should fulfill all of the obligations related to the agreement. And that was passed. So that would conclude my report.
Any questions? I have one item on the agenda for the work session, special assessments for Forest Fairville. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Next report would be Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
I would like to report that as a follow-up from June, June meeting, the 15th, I made a comment in regards to comments that were provided to me about sidewalk issues. I sent an email with detailed comments to the city manager on the subject. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sylvester? I have no items on the agenda for you, sir. Do you have any to add?
Uh, no, sir.
Next report is Intergovernmental Communications and Relations. That's my committee. I have no report. I have no questions if there are any. There's no items on the agenda for the work session for that. Order 27 is under that committee as well. So we move then to the next item, item number 6, the mayor's report. Just like to report briefly that with just the one item on the agenda for the work session of the 27th, unless the city manager has others, that meeting would be put off, that discussion. We will not have that meeting on the 27th. For the, and just as an FYI, for the council meeting of August, the first council meeting in August, and I believe that would be the third. That meeting will be a virtual meeting as well. And there will be, at the end of that meeting, a, an executive session for the purposes of discussing matters that would relate directly or indirectly to personnel. And you, so you will be getting a notice that when the agenda comes out, that would be noted. And this, I can tell you that a part of this issue, part, part of this meeting will deal with, or most of this meeting will deal with inquiries that have been made to me by Councilwoman Ness and some other members of the, some members of the staff. That will conclude my report. I will, would answer any questions if there are any. If there are no questions for the mayor's report, I would move then to item number 7, the city manager's report, Mr. Charles.
As we have the, the department head reports are all been filed and available for review. The report is available in the afternoon tonight. Also, I want to remind the citizens that the tax office is open. It was a tremendous success in its location at the senior center. We received many compliments on, on how efficient it was run and how, how the layout, actions of citizens and the employees. And we're that, a big shout out to our employees who stepped up and, from all departments. And there are many departments that were, that were active in this, from the Public Works Department that's setting it up to other departments who lended employees, including our police departments. Every, every department basically had a hand in this. And so we want to thank all those employees who stepped up and crossed the line and took on work that was not specific to them, but were able to. Since we do have such a small workforce in a small city, that's the only way we can get things done if our employees are willing to step up and help each other, each department that needs help when they need it. And they've been doing this for years, and this was just another example. Very few, very few lines, very few waiting. But the office is still open. It's not too late to pay your taxes. So if you're out there and you still need help, go in, get it done. We can, we need all the tax money we can get. And other than that, we've had some, some questions with regards to pop-up testing with COVID and other things. There will be some more testing available in Forest Park. We are updating our website with regards to information that'll be available. And, and we'll use our, all of our social media outlets in terms of, that we have available to us to get the word out when there are tests that are actually within the city of Forest Park. But remember, you can take a test anywhere that's offered in Hamilton County. Actually, anywhere in the state of Ohio, you can go get those tests for free. So if you need a test, go to the Hamilton County Public, Public Health website. Go to our website, look at the link, and you'll be able to find tests that are available in our area, but also all over the whole county. So other than that, if there's any questions or concerns, I'll be willing to, to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. We move then to item number 8, other reports, first of those being Law Director, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I did an opinion regarding the use of your iPad. And I'm sure you probably have seen that by now. That is something to be very cautious of. Because even though your private, non-business emails would not be disclosable, other parties could still have them searched. So you want to make sure that it's business-only on the Forest Park iPads. I also looked and approved the prohibited business in the residential zoning dealing with the massage parlor. I looked and approved for the resolution of the Small Business Assistance Program. And also looked at the issue of the Juneteenth celebration, which I've indicated is approved, you know, could be approved if you also decide, because that is definitely a local issue, not an issue of state general interest. And as a charter community, we would be able to designate such a holiday. If there are no questions, that would be the end of my report.
Any questions for the Law Director? There's none. We'll move to the next item. Next report would be Clerk of Council, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 19 S. 2020 through 21 S. 2020, and resolution numbers 23 S. 2020 and 24 S. 2020 will be posted by. And that concludes our report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, Ms. Boyd, I will be in my office tomorrow sometime probably between 11:30 and 1:00 to sign whatever documents I need. Next item on the agenda is new business. The first item on the new business is Resolution Number 25 S. 2020. Would the clerk please read that in full?
Resolution number 25 S. 2020. A resolution establishing a small business assistance program for companies impacted by the COVID-19 health crisis. Whereas the city of Forest Park has identified the retention of small businesses negatively impacted by the COVID-19 health crisis as a priority for its economic development program. And whereas a number of shop owners, restaurants, and small businesses face significant challenges relating to the requirement of operating in today's challenging business environment. And whereas the city of Forest Park has successfully secured through the CARES Act and other outside sources that can be used to fund. I'll read it again. Whereas the city of Forest Park has successfully secured funds through the CARES Act and other outside sources that can be used to fund this important business assistance program. And whereas this program will help these small businesses recover and ultimately thrive for many years to come. Now therefore be advised by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that the Council of the City of Forest Park hereby gives its consent for the city managers to establish Forest Park, the Forest Park Small Business Assistance Program. This program will be funded primarily without outside source of fund. Guidelines and eligibility requirements for the program will be established by city staff consistent with direction from the Forest Park State Council. Section 2, that under this program, the city of Forest Park will expedite and/or discount permitting fees and help businesses comply with COVID-19 requirements. Eligible companies can also receive a redevelopment grant of up to $2,000 to offset the costs associated with COVID-19-related improvements. City staff will make recommendations to the city council for approval. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its early. and take effect from and after its early, early date allowed by law.
Is there a motion?
You are mute. Hey, we need a reduction of resolution number 25 dash 2020.
Second.
Moving second, that we adopt resolution 25 dash 2020. Any discussion?
I would also move to amend the resolution, uh, and change the last sentence in section two from city staff will make recommendations to city council for approval. Uh, deleting, uh, inserting, changing to the city council, to the city manager for approval. Deleting to the city council and substituting to the city manager for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moving second to amend the, uh, man, resolution 2520 in section two, the last sentence. Uh, city staff will make recommendations to the city manager and strike city council for approval. Any discussion?
I just want to, um, say that, um, these are small amounts. Uh, we could have as many as up to 50, uh, of these. I don't see the purpose of bringing these back to council specifically because we're only meeting every two weeks and we're going to be going on recess in, in two weeks' time. Uh, I think these can be reviewed by the city manager appropriately to give approval. And I would urge adoption of the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Herbie. Yes. Holt. Yes. Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
The amendment has been approved, uh, by a vote of six to nothing. So we're now to the main motion. Is there a, uh, I think there was already a motion. So we have a vote out. Would the clerk please call the roll on the amended motion?
Holt. Yes. Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Resolution number 25 dash 2020 stands approved as amended, is amended. The next item on the agenda is a motion, uh, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to receive the general fund summary report as provided to council via email this afternoon.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we will see the general fund summary report, uh, as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion?
That was not the motion. The motion was, they were provided to us via email.
Whatever. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, uh, all of them in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
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 The motion to, uh, receive the general fund summary report, however, we got it passed. Is there any further business to come before the body? Is there any further business to come before the body?
I'd just like to make a reminder that on this Saturday at Word of Deliverance, 300 food boxes, 300 protein boxes, I'm sorry, protein, produce boxes, and 300, um, 300 gallons of milk will be, um, available for free pickup. If, um, if there's, there's been a lot of elderly, we are also doing, um, drop-offs to the door, no touch.
Thank you. Any other announcements or any other items to come before the body? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Everybody be safe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye-bye.